Um, that he did. I know you're saying.
You know, I mean, I would like to make them.
I think.
So.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
It's.
He's in the.
It's more.
Sure combo.
Where is it?
I think.
Thank you so much.
Never wear the.
Seven chain of a couple of the need that I wear.
So such. So this year, so maybe not just a project, but so just as an impressive. We can't make the research.
So. Maybe so, yeah. Every. All right.
And call to. Which basically was in directions.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for being with us on this day. Thank you, dear Lord, for our life, hope and strength. Father God, I ask you to be with us as we go through this meeting. Although we are a few short, Lord, let us do the things that's right and pleasing in thy sight and for the town of Silver City. Here's another blessings I ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
For joining the prayers of the.
I believe. I don't even say it's. And. Which is. I'm going to ensure I bring out. Any of this. See, you can test this for.
Which part of the mission statement?
Town of Silver City Mission Statement to Advance a Plan as Far as Success Through A Bountiful Governance, Dynamic Partnerships, and a Engaged Community.
Which one?
And Silver City Meeting Statement. Silver City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drives success in a globally competitive society.
And she goes, uh, adjustments to the agenda.
That's right. Take a motion to approve the agenda.
Sure. So. Second and final. Our first motion passes. The motion with consent agenda.
How long do we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Sure.
Motion probably second, I approve.
Uh.
By now. On the first. Motion carries. Uh, this call is a motion to open the public hearing.
We're going to be opening the public hearing.
There's second.
Second.
Moving to second and final.
I'm.
And phones. Uh, what?
Uh, your question, my right, sitting back on a phone, we're going to go to a stock presentation. It's also got a, uh, top one, I think, on the screen. Yes, sir. Thank you, Jack. Mayor Bo-Town, good evening, Commissioners. The one thing we have before you is case number R two, five, zero, three, zero, one. This is a proposed conditional rezone to allow for a major subdivision. Brad, you can just go to the right to the next slide, I'll get to it. Oh, yeah, we have Midstate Development Centers requesting a conditional rezon, uh, probably from heavy industrial and agricultural residential to residential three conditional, uh, or three C. The property comprises of seven parcels totaling an approximate two hundred and twenty-nine acres. And the proposed major subdivision will consist of some one hundred residential units. Next slide. This slide here is some aerial pictometry showing the existing conditions of the site. Uh, the seven parcels that make up the cyrillic situation within that stockyard road, uh, loop. And it's bounded by U S sixty-four directly to the south. Uh, then really if those not familiar with the site, we had a couple of identifying markers to help pinpoint the vicinity a little bit more accurately. Uh, so we have Jordan Electric Motors right there to the, to the north. Um, Unity Powerhouse Church, uh, Chardonnay Allow Meats and Carolina Stockyard. Next slide. Didn't matter the chrom zoning of the area, I see ninety-five percent of the site right now is heavy industrial without. One little portion right there on the eastern side of the, the property is, uh, A R. Um, so again, that's going to be, uh, supposed to be rezoned to R three C. Next slide. This slide shows the site according to the future land use map and our comprehensive plan. Um, as you see, the orangeish area, uh, is designated for medium to high density development. And all that intended to support that commercial corridor along sixty-four there. Next slide. So this slide is, uh, the concept plan submitted by the applicant. It provides the more specific breakdown, uh, the type of housing involved. Uh, right now, it's, it's mostly single-family residential, uh, but there are going to be some options for some townhomes and condos and apartments along the way, too. Right now, there are supposed to be four entrances to the site, one along U S sixty-four west. And that's going to be a right in, right out only. And then you're going to have three along, along Stockyard. As of right now, D O T is okay with the traffic impact assessment that's been, uh, conducted and they're currently working with the applicant on the rest of these improvements as well, so. All right, uh, next slide. Consistent with the future land use map of our comprehensive plan, as an area designated for medium to high density development, is intended to accomplish several things. To provide net housing options with public water and sewer, disperse development along major thoroughfares. And strengthen the middle housing, which is something that's been long missing in Silver City. To increase the number of residential areas in the E T J and have most single-family residences with modern small light sizes. Lastly, it does require that open spaces integrated into development areas. Excellent. Now, since we've had a, like, major subdivision, this is my first one for the town as well, so. I just wanted to take a minute to provide a quick refresher, uh, on the process and all the necessary steps to help inform your decision. Um, the big thing here is that the major subdivision process consists of three steps. The first one is the applicant applies for a conditional rezon through our office with a site-specific development plan. And then they go through the entire process with a legislative hearing and C R C review and all that. Um, if approved, we go to step two, and that's when the applicant actually prepares a, a preliminary plat. Now, we can, we can review preliminaries, we just can't approve them, and we won't approve them until they meet. Uh, all the appropriate approvals for things like water, sewer, uh, road design, stormwater, driveway, et cetera, all the heavy hitters. Um, so once you actually do get preliminary approval, then you can start your actual construction of the site, your roads, your utility lines, all that, so. Once you get to there, that brings you to the third step, which is your final plat approval, and that's where you can actually. Then everything's completed, everything's installed, you actually start marketing the property against all the lots. Next slide. Conditions, um, when the applicant submits a site-specific development plan, from the point of the application through the legislative hearing where we are now on the technical review committee. Um, they're reviewing the plan. So they provide comments, notes, and requirements that are needed for the development of the site. And what we do with those comments is we incorporate them if needed into the plan as conditions. Um, a couple of catches with conditions, though. They have to address specific zoning conformance issues. Our impacts that are reasonably expected to be generated by the development for the use of the site. And if both the developments and the governing body must agree to the conditions. Uh, in your packets, uh, that was proposed eleven recommended conditions based on our P R C feedback and other specific circumstances following the development. Uh, should be. It's in the, it's in a appendix, right?
It's. Yeah, so. We can see, uh.
Two sections, yes, in two sections. Where the, the word with the signatures, you start with fifty-six and the word out, signature star comes up.
Two million difference between. It's.
Very little one small modification. Yeah, so we decided to break out, um, one of the conditions involving. The, uh. Condition four, and we basically included that the applicant submit a phasing plan. Uh, just considering, given the circumstances around the sewer moratorium and stuff, and we put that in the ordinance. So the language that you have, um, in that will be, is included in the, in the ordinance, so. Um. Without going to my end point, but that's segue. Um, so for the next one, uh, for the next slide is, uh, phasing. Um, this is where, you know, given the town circumstances with the sewer moratorium and the pending merger with Tri River. We expanded on condition four in the ordinance to include that the applicant submit the phasing plan. Um, lastly, all utilities, roads, open space, and, and recreation, um, were conditioning that to be included with each individual phase at the time of development. So basically, what this does is it makes sure that those things are essentially accounted for in each phase. Though, instead of like getting to the final phase and having to. Put in all these different things at the last minute, we're making sure that things are serviced as it, as it happens. Next slide. Uh, this item was reviewed by the planning board during their regular meeting on March third. Uh, given the size and scope of the project, we went ahead and sent out some subtle memory, a notice of patience, uh, to property owners, you know, joining, joining property owners. We didn't need to, but we wanted to go ahead and over and over five. Um, as with that notification, we did receive one comment from the public prior to the meeting. Uh, from the owner of the adjoining parcel directly south of the site, they expressed concerns over trespassing. And they would like, uh, a fence to be built along the. Breath of their property. Um, we also had a citizen speaking opposition to the project citing concerns there were conflicts between the adjoining residential and industrial uses. Uh, that so it had concerns about how the site was marketed originally when they first purchased our property. Um, after discussion on the planning board, the vote was six to one to recommend approval. Um, and for tonight's public hearing, we performed all the legal notifications and we haven't had any additional comments other than the, the person speaking about the fence. And that is it. Do you have any questions?
You guys send up speed.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, with the proposal of houses, apartments, and townhouses. Are they all going to be mixed in together, or will there be a section for houses and a section for townhomes and a section?
Great question. Um, can you go back around to the site that shows the concept plan? The, the color designates is kind of what the proposed layout is right now. Um, so most of that in the purple is going to be your single family. Um, and then add the red, which is kind of closer up there at the top, that's going to be for your condos and apartments, so there's going to be a certain degree of separation among the, what's there.
And also I saw in, uh, one of your conditions. I remember, A, about streets and parking, it says, um, street parking has been prohibited, so I assume there will be planning approved for the homeowner, the apartment. Runner, whatever, to have at least two cars. Because we certainly don't want to make the mistake we made a hundred years.
That's right, yeah, and that's also something that we're looking at with the drafting of the new U T O, absolutely.
As far as the actual stockyard, uh, stockyard road. Uh, upgrades on the, on the road. Because it's, it's, to me, it's kind of small for all the traffic that may be coming in and out.
Hmm.
Um, anything with regards to that?
Another great question. So a lot of that is coming through what they, was the traffic impact assessment done by D O T. Uh, so I'm going to actually, the applicant is here, I'm going to let him explain, you know, the details of those improvements. Uh, I think he'd probably break it down a little bit better than I could, um, but hold on to that one, and I'll, if you don't want. Okay. One more.
Okay.
What's, um, there, there's, stockyard road doesn't have water, doesn't have sewer or water. Is that correct? About about town?
Uh, this specific, uh, has water. It does have water.
Does have sewer.
Does have sewer.
But, and then you're often. You know, would I be able to type into any infrastructure that's going to be built by this?
That is a very good question. Um, I, I think that would probably be one that I would punt over to Tri River to see, they'll be the, they're pretty much the sole authority after the merger on who what can do.
And just really to tap on what, um. Commissioner Patterson, Commissioner, I think it was a few years ago, we had some, um. Uh, church organization, a church that wanted to do some building on that road. So, you know, just knowing, trying to figure out how would that be affected? Or if it will be affected, and I know we said probably would be a Tri River. Uh, conversation, but I know that they will deny. Being able to, to do any building up there because of that situation, so with this going in, with that.
With the, with the road and the, the utilities?
The utilities.
Okay.
With that, you know, just thinking about.
Yeah.
Them being denied and then.
They have a sewer route in our presentation. Probably will, will address that.
Okay.
Okay. And you talked about, um, course, you know, the move happening here in Silver City. Looking at. Single-family home dwellings, do we have a price range of how that's going to work?
Yeah.
I don't have muchness the price, but again, if we, we can address it. Okay, so, yeah, the applicant is going to have a presentation after I finish mine, and they're going to go through some of that stuff, too.
Any questions for Mr. Moon? Yeah, that's just cool. Uh, normal song about, about sewer water, sewer, I threw. Little ham, draw on that, yeah.
I'm sorry.
My. Sewer up there. So, you said somebody will say something about it.
I'm so sorry, I'm frightened to say, are you saying that, uh, somebody is going to talk about worms, so? Yes, yes, sir, yeah, the applicant is here, and, uh, you're actually going to get two additional presentations after mine, and then hopefully they can shore up some of it.
I suggest that, um, we go through that two presentations, because we never say much about the planning room. And we've got all these questions answered in our presentation, and then maybe we can bring him back.
I think the applicant's next to speak.
Yes, sir.
So any other questions for Mr. Mike from, I can speak. No, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay.
You're supposed to say, you know. There's still branch, seven, sixty-seven. I'm doing London, doing in North Carolina, and, uh, I am the, the, uh. The founder of the real estate, uh, in question, and also the mega site. I have with the gentleman, he was the, uh, representative developer tonight to answer any grammar questions you might have. Um, first of all.
Jamie, for, which will welcome me, Jamie Classen, I live at sixty-one, twenty-nine Bella Street, Ryan, North Carolina, and as I said, I will, uh, work for the builder event.
Okay.
So the reason I wanted to stand up tonight is to kind of tell you how we got here. And if you, if you look at the mega site, um. We, you know, we're spending only purchase three hundred and fifty-five acres. From the mega site and another hundred acres from Dr. Kurtland and Double Lou. So we're ending that after we sold duty energy, sixty-seven acres for the, for the, um. A switching station, a substation, and of course, project ice over to the right, um, in the construction. We still have thirteen hundred and twenty-six acres left on the mega site. So. We do not leave the feeder park anymore, which is what mid-state was for. We were told fifteen years ago that, you know, a large development needed, uh, a feeder park for other. Peoples that might pop up to feed the, the, the big behemoths, but that didn't happen, so. When we ended up, I mean, it was a five billion dollar project that, uh, had greater kind of demands and larger sewer demands. So we decided to pivot the residential from mid-state since it wasn't needed as an industrial park. Now, coincidentally, um, the Silver Landings, uh, planning consultants. Also said that mid-state is better suited for residential than any industrial, anyway, because it's kind of been, you know, a, a more. Setting for, for, for houses, so that's where we, that's how we got here, we don't leave the feeder park anymore. You know, we're looking to bring revenue into the town. And, you know, you're all reading about how this development was popping up around us. And we don't have economic briefings, and people know the Ashburn and Sanford, and this is our chance to, to keep, uh, you know, to keep. People here, our children, and, you know, our friends and family, we don't want them to, you know, leave. And we want to provide them with a place to live, work, and play. Um, so there was a, um. A mid-dustrial. Kind of, uh, consultant that, that's out of Sanford, that had a couple of good points I wanted to share with you. First of all, the, um. Compares and make around eleven million people in public for, and it's projected by two thousand and fifty to be fourteen million, so we have thirty million people coming to the area. Uh, what I liked that you said it was that a lot of these people would work in Raleigh. But twenty-five to thirty percent of the workforce will be, uh, remote. So my dream would be, hey, move to Silver City, have, you know, a more relaxed family and be able to work. Into the bobby plant and not having to live in Raleigh, so, um, you know, hence we, you know, we're kind of pushing this residential. Um, as well as, um. You know, the opportunity for, you know, affordable housing, which Jamie, Jamie's going to, uh. In a dress, go to the next slide, three hundred. So this was, uh, the land use plan that was adopted very recently. And again, coincidentally, it kind of fell in the river, it's in the period, so. Next. Even you might want to, then you might want to address some of this.
Yeah, this was just sort of supporting the, from the planning board about the need for housing. Um, and as, uh, Tim was saying, um. Where, where you could put it, and just as you can see, it's hard to see the numbers, but in that red box, I think the total number is twenty-three new homes built. Um, in, in the Silver City area since two thousand and ten. And so wherever you put those homes, this would be a great area, even the next slide, just going to support for kind of our vision. Uh, to have a variety of homes that serve, uh, a number of people in the community, both, uh, presidents, uh. New members who may look at, you know, full speed or wherever, there was, uh, different stages of life and different square footages. And, uh, ultimately different price points, so at the top left would kind of be the, uh, uh, it's a ranch, and those would be from twelve to two thousand square feet. Generally speaking, we have a brand that was targeted, uh, people who are fifty-five and older, doesn't necessarily have to be that way, if the buyer aren't restricted. But it's kind of giving you an idea of, of a, a target buyer in, in the community. Then you have a, a typical two-story home on the top right, you know, fifteen to twenty-five hundred square feet, maybe somebody, a new family, family with kids, growing family, somebody who's moving off. Just gives you another, uh, completely new community. And you know, bottom left, this is, uh, the condo that we speak of, and, and these are actually each building, so there's three. There's actually two units on top and the bottom, and they're roughly a thousand square feet, and that gives us our, our best price point for affordability for a first-time home buyer. Eventually, you're, you're single, uh, a newlywed couple, uh, but again. If we look at that entry level and have provided the most people we can, I have to own themselves, uh, that will kind of be that bottom. And I know, um, pretty, uh, uh, commissioner, you mentioned apartments, e- everything in here will be, uh, homeownership, these are rentals. We have a pretty stringent investor policy to try to prevent that and make sure the homes we have are in the community for the actual homeowners themselves. And then the last, uh, product on the bottom line would be townhomes, and, uh, that's just a, a sample rendering, and those would get aged, or excuse me. Um, fifteen to two thousand square meters in the approximate range for those homes, and so ultimately throughout the. Uh, community will have people who could live in, in potentially a, a variety of homes in the same community over their lifetime, just kind of give you the idea of, of different demand we can meet.
Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, right, right, recently, I had a financial problem.
Sure, and so, uh, again, we don't have a brand of Ryan Homes, but our company is called N B R, it's really just a merging of two names, N B Homes and Ryan Homes. But as, as a, a big brand, we actually have a mortgage company, we try to capture as many people to provide the most attractive financing via people, um, a, a rate that they can afford. Um, so again, it's just kind of the, the whole community experience that we like to provide our homeowners from the day they meet sales rep to, um. The day they buy the home.
Awesome.
So we don't have the design, so I can't dial in, but on the condos, we like to kind of be in the low two hundred thousands is, is kind of an idea, and then, um. Depending on the size of the home you're looking at in the low to mid threes. Um, and then just the re-market rate, um, but today, without having our, our design set done, I can't give a, a very really dialed-in number. But again, we're trying to have a, a band of price range for a variety of people. And then just to give you an idea of what we like our communities to look like, so they are, uh, again, the community experience, uh, people would be proud of their community, uh, you have entry monumentation, um. The, the picture I love is kind of give you that, that main focal point, so if you're in front of sixty-four and you turn into a community, there'd be some sort of landscape design and, and, and you would enter in to see the homes and ideally the amenities center. That's the back of a, an mini center we have, but, uh, again, we have two large spots on the site plan, uh. And whether it's one spot that has a pool, a cabana, and, and it's enhanced amenities with maybe pickleball court or something, and if something similar or a second one, it may not have a pool. But, uh, those are kind of the concepts we have to mix in to meet those open space requirements and provide again a, a great community experience for, uh, homeowners.
May I ask a question? Um, with that, what, what does the H O A fees kind of range in those kind of communities?
So, uh, with limited amenities, you're looking at like fifty dollars a month. And then as you have more amenities, it can get pricer, closer to a hundred and fifty dollars a month, that's on an extremely, a bunch of larger master plan, so there's a ban. And then, uh, with the condo and the townhome, those HOAs will have, uh, a capital contribution for the maintenance of, of the CO over time, and that's a little more money. But again, the idea being that we have the N B R mortgage, if we talk about affordability, uh, we're looking for price rates and that overall mortgage, including HOA to be, be met. By, by a variety of people. So the idea is not to be able to price people out by having something, uh, let's say Disney dice, but, you know, to have a wide range of everybody be able to afford, uh, great community design. Uh, part of the thing for some of the questions was how, how does it stay? Um, and so this next slide here just kind of give you an idea of, you wrote the, the magnitude of a project this large and that, um, it's not so impactful tomorrow. Right, so in, in the, either one yellow is current standard A and giving that preliminary plan, final plan. Um, take some time and suggesting the, the, the theoretical time that it took a year, so we would start developing. And we know it'll take to about four years from today before people start closing their homes and you have C O's. And, uh, we're roughly estimating, you know, around a hundred and fifty homes being sold per year, and so. That can move up depending on, on buyer demand for the area. But just to give you an idea of the gradual processes we'll take, and it, there is impact to the community, and we like to think that's positive. Uh, to, to bring people here to live a great life, but it's not going to break a thousand people tomorrow, so the impact isn't just overwhelming and burdensome to a community, it's gradual. And some of the T I comments we'll, we'll address here in a minute with the traffic, but those improvements to the roads and surrounding area will happen as the project happens.
I think, uh, sewer is on everybody's mind, and just know that there's time, and with Tri River. From the ground, obviously, you know, they're going to have time to, to bring sewer in, and that being addressed, uh, you know, by more civil engineer, but. This is not going to happen all at once, and part of the pivot was that. When we looked at, uh, the thirty-one and twenty-six acres and an industrial. Uh, project might mean two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand gallons, and we're eventually optimistic that we will do that. But, you know, housing development, market, I'm wrong, but I think thirty-five thousand gallons a day gets you ninety to a hundred homes. So this is the mowing and fruit, this is what I'm saying.
Do the next slide, please. But another, uh, item that kind of was addressed, we're asked at the planning board, again, uh, concerns that the community would come over well, and the, the county may not be able to support it. Just looking at kind of two items that, uh, would, would help support that, the sewer waters, one, the cap fees, um. And just to show when we would, uh. The question, or there's a comment, uh, condition about phases, we got two phases, probably actually have three large phases, and then there'd be sub phases in between theirs. Each time you reported a plat, you would pay that sewer water cap fee, and that way you'll go to Tri Rivers to help fund the sewer water improvements here i- in the local area. And just over the life of the job, at current rate today, that'd be twenty million dollars. Over the life of the project rate for Tri Rivers to help improve and pay for any capital improvements they have in the area. And then secondly, if at the end of the project, the overall house, uh, which is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the Silver City tax rate, um. Um the total amount of property taxes raised for level of support is around twenty-three million dollars. And so the average could move up or down, but just to give you an idea that as things are progressing, people are moving in. You can kind of see what's coming forward, the, it's easier for local owners to plan when they know what the revenues in the future are going to be. And that's just kind of give you an idea of, you know, uh the growth is coming and how it's going to be paid for by this community alone. So yeah, is that it? All right, any questions?
Some questions?
I have a question.
Um and maybe I'm just curious, um do, do we know the average value of the homes that are in the neighborhood currently?
My, I know, uh the range is over, kind of starting at low two-hundred thousands.
These homes, I mean, the homes that are already in the neighborhood or stockyard, what the value of the.
Yeah, I just took the uh, the provided property tax rates from Chatham County.
I was curious to know how they.
Okay, yes, sir. No, I don't know.
Any other questions? Can, can, can someone speak?
Yeah.
Please put such name or address, please, where.
Good evening, board members and staff, Mark Ashens with the C Group. We have offices in Rio One, Lindwood, Avenue, Raleigh, North Carolina, and three sixty-seven Freedom Park. Uh mosaic project in this borough of Chatham Park. Um and I'm the principal of the company, been practicing engineering and land planning since nineteen ninety-two. Um and you know, we're excited to be here tonight. Um I know this is, it seems large, it's, it's different. But the uh, you're not seeing anything that a lot of other burgeoning towns around Raleigh metro area are not seeing already. We, we do work in Clayton, Feetway Arena, Smithfield, Wellington, uh Apex. And this, this process of growth, the unique thing I think about this area is, is that, you know, you're a little further out, but you've got these huge job creators. And it's not just the Wolf Speed, it's the Toyota Battery Plant just right up the road, and then all the other facilities are going to come in as these things ramp up. We need to go to the second slide, and I'm going to be brief with some of the stuff because it's already been talked about to Tim's previously. Um I, I learned things I like to note here, we've got two large amenities planned within the project. We also have a lot of open space and trails and greenways. Um the open space, the town requires five percent. Uh we, we have twenty, twenty percent on the site, so we're, we're just shy of fifty acres there. The, the streets would be town streets, uh utilities would be Tri River Water and Sewer once that is completed. We'll have sidewalks, greenways and trails, as I mentioned. The next slide, we can kind of flip through that briefly, because Tim had covered it, but the land use plan says that this area needs to be. Uh medium-high density development, and you've got a paragraph that describes, and I think we fit exactly what that is. If you think about it, we're kind of between the downtown proper today and where a lot of the job creation is going to occur. So we're filling a gap in that location. Uh next slide, please. This is again, is a, is a sort of one with land plan, just a few things I'm going to mention about the plan that I think will be helpful. The main entrance would be right on the sixty-four, that's the bottom of the screen. And that, that would be a right-in, right-out access, so there's a median in that section of sixty-four as you drive out there. So um someone that's going to be entering the site is most likely going to enter from that location right there. Uh the other access points are connecting over the stockyard road. We've got three points of connection, one at the top north, and then two other uh posters to where the stockyard is. There is some sewer actually out there today, I mean, the stockyard, I think a few other things on sewer. I, I can't speak for the town, but I imagine it's just the mortuary and the limitation of sewer today that's we've been able to uh not allow people to connect. We're going to be bringing sewer from the south, uh on the other side of sixty-four, coming north. Um where what you think is, and then we'll be swinging across, boring under sixty-four. Uh you've already approved previously in the bottom, like, there's sort of a tangle around there, where the stockyard will be sixty-four for commercial development. You know, there, there'll be uh gas, hotels, commercial, uh quick service restaurants, those kind of things in that quadrant. Based on the current zoning, by right. So that all needs sewer as well. So we, we look at ourselves as a sewer solution, right? Uh we're going to be bringing sewer from the south to the north, and then that sewer will also extend off of our country. Whether the rates are to allow you to connect to that sewer. So, so we'll not just be to serve this project, but we'll be extending sewer to the ends of our project limits. And anything that can drain positively would be able to connect to that sewer. So I do think some of the stuff that's sort of on the eastern edge of the project there, would, would have some availability to get in once sewer is available. You're doing your part because you're improving the capacity of the wastewater plant, right? That's not happened today, you're under an SOC with the state, but y'all and Tri River are working aggressively to get the SOC removed. And you're building additional capacity in the plant, and we've done the numbers, and obviously this will bear itself out. But we firmly believe that the project you've entitled today, infill development within the town. The Wolf Speed commitment that you've made, that all of that stuff can be accommodated by you going to six million gallons per day of wastewater capacity. Now ultimately, you're going to need to grow again at some point, but that isn't a problem with these particular projects. And as Tim mentioned, you know, this type of project, it's not like a lawnmower where you, you build a building, you flip on the lights. And you got six thousand cars there the next day, and you got seventy-five employees in the first shift to come in, and the toilets are flushing. Uh subdivision is completely the opposite of that. Um and Jamie spoke to that briefly. This year, we, we can flip to uh, well, tell about, yeah, let's flip one slide over, I'm going to speak to one thing about, they came up the planning board, and then we'll go back into the utility stuff. Um there was a gentleman spoke at the planning board, and I certainly heard his concerns loud and clear. He bought his piece of property, he had a business in Sanford. So hey, I, I see this is all some industrial around me, and you know, this looks like a good spot. So came up here, he's building a facility, uh you could see the sort of the improvements. And so we're keenly aware of that. Uh around the whole property, we've got a fifty-foot room bumper, okay? And so that's what you see in the purple there. Uh but if you'll notice, we, we've got generally amply more room than that. Conveniently, it's all vegetated. So, so we feel comfortable that we can, uh in this particular location, we don't see an adverse issue with their operation. And our potential future home buyers here. This would be phase two of the project. When you have something like this, it's similar to like game land property adjacent to, you, you just disclose, you're, you're going to disclose that to home buyer. You know, behind you, there's a project that's in zone for heavy or light industrial, and it's there, you can see it. So it's just sort of a buyer beware uh type of thing. So we feel comfortable that that will, would actually be accommodated. Now to the next slide, and I'll get back on the sewer side of things. So we're in kind of a step one of the process, and you've already approved other projects, uh Serenity, Foxhaven. So these are all projects that have gotten the conditional zoning approval. Well, they haven't started yet, well, they haven't started because you're under an SOC, right? But those projects take years to build out, it's not like a commercial project. So we're looking, in, in this current year right now, if, if you choose to allow this uh conditional zoning to be approved. The next step for us is we will prepare the preliminary plat and CDs for the initial phase of the project. We will also work with Tri River and generally develop, they develop with agreement, which is something they're accustomed to doing. Because we don't need all of that sewer right away. It, it's really going to be six or seven years of sewer after we start building homes. And we're not going to start building homes for a couple of years, so your plant's going to be finished in a couple of years, right? So it all kind of, it, it leads hand in hand, because when you start a project like this, you've got to grade the site, build the main roads and drives. Grade the lots off before you can even start a model. And typically, a builder like NBR is going to come out there and they're going to put in some models initially, they're not going to go in there and put forty homes on the ground, they're going to build models and then start taking orders. And then start building. And if you've seen projects over like in Pittsburgh or Chatham County, they kind of ramp up, you know, the first year or two. So then by year three, you kind of get to a decent pace, and then you get to that sort of pace that Jamie mentioned, where it's maybe a hundred and fifty units a year for a period of time. So, so this is not something that's going to immediately impact you, it's uh, it's going to take time. The downstream sewer here will flow to the Blood Run Lift Station, which is near West Thorough Street, just south of it. That station needs to be upgraded. So these are things that we would have to work out with Tri River. In order to get the project to move forward. So the SOC coming along and then working out, you know, the upgrades, y'all actually have some funding already in place. To do some improvements at that Blood Run Lift Station. And we have some ideas that we've already talked with the town and Tri River about, uh maybe that can be done in a efficient way. Um so these are all necessary things, but y'all have already kind of done your part by getting the wastewater plant improvement going. You know, there's other jurisdictions where that's not the case, and so they're still sort of floundering, if you will. But uh you're, you're in a good position, and what we're proposing to, I think, uh coincides well with the timing of everything. As far as the traffic improvements go, um DOT is keen on these, uh the, the term they use is a RCI. It's the turn lanes you see where you, so our main entrance would not have a, an intersection right there. We think ultimately there would be a leftover, so if you're coming from Wolf Speed or Ashbrook, someone could make a leftover. You've probably seen those on fifteen five oh one, it's not a full intersection, you, you get to move to a left turn and you can only turn left, right? Someone can't come out of the project to go that way, they, they have to go a different direction. That, we think ultimately there would be some commercial on the south side of the road, and the leftover there would, would line up well. But initially, it'll just be a right-in, right-out to that. Um and there will likely be a signal at the Ellington Stockyard intersection. Or another RCI there where you would turn and have to go further south and do a U-turn and come around. And that's, that NCDT is basically going to that, that sort of technique everywhere in the state for on roadways like this. And so whatever we come to final terms with them, you know, that's, that's what we'll do. As far as on Stockyard Road, we don't, the, the initial comments back from DOT is they didn't really have any recommendations for any further improvements on that road. Because most of the traffic's going to be coming indirectly off of sixty-four. But you know, they may change it in tune as they see some of the other commercial activity that I mentioned near the intersection, you know, show up in time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the presentations? I mean, I, anyway, I have any of the results, so I don't think about that. Thank you for the question about it.
The comment at the planning board, the, the valid concern about the residential being adjacent to the uh heavy industrial or industrial type of use there. So we, we looked at the areas and the setbacks and so forth, we felt comfortable about that. Um there's, on the uh, on the side, on the northeast side of the property, there was a, there was a, a gap of where. Our property boundary and that some of the lots just north of us. Um and, and in all the land that we presented to you, we have succeeded that gap, you know, it's a small twenty-foot wide thing. We, we didn't try to take that gap of land, because we've left that for the adjacent property enters. It's just simpler to do that on a piece of property this large than to get into, you know, where, where should that line be?
Questions?
No questions.
So this, our development is in the ETJ, right? Do, do you have any thoughts or uh considerations for annexation?
Yes, absolutely, yes. So this, we would, we would, uh, we would definitely want to annex the project. And I think that would occur maybe the first phase, uh plating CDs, uh yes, that, that's definitely the intention here.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions? Uh Commissioner Wang is not going to be in the office, he made a fresh email, asked me to put through instructions on this behalf. Uh touched on the concerns with the capacity of the station. Was concerned at that, that capacity and uh. Stream analysis. What is your thoughts on that?
Absolutely. I think Tri River would require a downstream analysis. Uh we've got a couple of ideas on how to accomplish this, but. Uh in the, before we could get an approval from Tri River, we will have to accomplish that. Uh so that would be part of the CD review process.
That's good, that's good.
Yes, yeah.
That's all he was concerned about. Any other questions?
Another question, I was wondering if there's an answer. Do you guys, you know, you want to estimate what the um. This is the town for, for um, like you, you say you're going to yield a certain amount of property tax, what does it actually cost, say, in that first phase where you make a hundred and fifty thousand? What does that actually cost for, you know, the government to provide services, especially schools and stuff? Is it greater than that, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars property tax revenue? You guys have any estimates like that?
That's a great question. Uh and. That question can, we've done a lot of work in Chatham County uh since the early, mid-nineties, and that question came up a lot. And the reason it came up a lot in Chatham County was because they were funding the schools, right? I mean, obviously, Silver City's not funding the schools, but it's, it's certainly a concern of yours, right? Um so to answer your question, typically, the price point that we see that is market rate and above market rate. Will carry the water, okay? And the other thing you have to look at is, is I was involved in Gov's Club, that, you know, it's sort of an onset period. Um and those same questions came up. Well, what happened was. Projects like Gov's Club and Black Chapel and Preserve are well, one of the schools like. Uh Martha Power, Perry Harrison, and so you, you, you know the schools that have been built on that side of the county, right? Um and that's what happens when you start generating some rooftops, there's a couple of things that happen. You're going to get some new schools over time, and, and the county's been collecting fees for those new schools, as you know, right? And there's, I know there's a bunch of near markets inside Chatham Park, but projects like this are what's actually going to get you all new schools. And, and, and uh additions to, you know, to existing schools. So that's, that's just the cause and effect. It's also going to get you more retail services. You, you already have a, a decent amount of retail and commercial here, but it's going to get you another sort of. Level and layer uh of what you currently have in the, in the town as a result of more rooftops, right? So that, that's, you're going to have some more traffic, and then, you know, we're having to make that traffic with the DOT. Yeah.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to start to speak on this public hearing, the third recording? Still not going to speak. You have not, no motion close to the hearing? Second?
Exactly.
Uh, I think second, I was informed.
All right.
I will pose. Like, here is me. A motion to approve if, if suddenly. Applicable in the zone from sixty-one to fifty.
Make a motion to a third villain, proposing that in the eleven conditions recommended by staff. Which is resuming of the subject properties from heavy industrial and agriculture residential to residential condition. To allow for a major residential subdivision. Consistent with twenty twenty-four components of planning incompatible with the health, safety and general welfare of the public. So, there's second, on the further.
All right.
Oh, is there a second motion that? One, two, three, sixty-one, thirty-one.
You want us to read that, that, you only make the motion to read the paragraph?
We only have two motions on this.
The whole paragraph at the bottom, such action and amendment to the town of Silver City's zoning map as requested is reasonable. And in the public interest and will benefit the community considering. The site is of a sufficient size to allow the proper screening and buffers to adjacent properties. And the property is located adjacent to highway US sixty-four business, providing practicality, easy access. And reduce travel times to the community. And the proposed rezoning advances the public health, safety and welfare of the town of Silver City.
The motion to me is our second, second. Second, I was informed, that was posed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Point two. Uh, bucket, one, three, two, drive.
That again. All right, here we go. So uh this public hearing, uh there is. This public hearing is for the closing, the closing of utility drives. Uh utility drive is situated off Progress Boulevard. It uh serves as primary access for the wastewater, wastewater treatment plant. And uh once the murders completed, the road would exist on property owned by Tri River. So what's being proposed by staff is, of course, I would often be able to declare the road be closed permanently. Uh to benefit the town, it would benefit the town not to have to maintain the road and property owned by Tri River. Um and then for future, um, next slide, Brad, if you don't mind. So what being proposed is that green line, all the way to the end of it is what's going to be closed. There's a gate right there towards the end, um that actually accesses the wastewater treatment plant, everything on that green line all the way. Um, that actually accesses the wastewater treatment plant. Everything on that green line all the way to the Progress Boulevard is what's going to be closed. And there will be a second road proposed, I believe, a little bit further south on progress, on some point in the future. On next slide. So here's the procedure for the street closing. Uh, this is per section one sixty eight dash two ninety nine of Jones, that's just the North Carolina. The one dots a resolution declaring the town's intention to permanently close utility drive, which we did. Um, then staff follows the prescribed actions of one sixty eight dash two ninety nine regarding public notification. We published a resolution in the newspaper for four consecutive weeks. We posted that as a public hearing at least two places along the street. And we now resolution to all areas of the property adjoining a street if applicable. In this case, it wasn't applicable because we're the only owner of the property. Nobody else is that. So, uh, right now, we're in step three, we're unfortunately in a public hearing regarding the closing of utility drive. It's worth to close the street and order is adopted declaring it permanently closed. Um, and then a copy of the order is, uh, filled with the Chatham County restaurant deeds and utility drive for move from the building, probably not.
Any questions for? Mr. Rick.
We're just wondering, you haven't declared the hearing open yet, right?
Okay, so. Should I mention that I've been part of hearing for so long until we drive?
You got, let me do my speech again. All right, thank you all.
Please to speak at this public hearing. And also to speak. And you're going to close the public hearing.
Go ahead. Want to close the public hearing?
Given you have a second, I was informed. Those powers. Motion carries. We're looking at actions and things from five of our department. Doing that motion to approve the utility.
Motion to approve the permanent closing of utility drive. Opposed action is neither a detriment to the public interest, nor in conflict with any other property in the vicinity.
So. I'm second, I was informed. Powers, that's your guess.
I'm John and Keith, our finance guys. We had some conversations at our, uh, budget work session, uh, last week. We have three, uh, things we wanted to bring back to you. One of those, uh, of course, we don't have anything to follow there, uh, that were tense, but we didn't talk about. Uh, streets, which probably that first would be.
Uh, yeah, so the streets, uh, mentioned that we currently have a five dollar vehicle tag fee, uh, and there was talk of increasing it for next year. Uh, and the board asked to, if we increase it, what, what are we going to do then? Uh, uh, you should have a list of streets that are highlighted in gray. To be, uh. And, uh, if we were to increase it to a fifteen dollar fee up from ten, it would, uh, add in roughly sixty, uh, sixty thousand dollars. And that is, uh, and doing the recommended action on, for those streets is what we would do with that sixty thousand. And that's just hitting, it's hitting the already pretty good streets and backsealing it or, um, doing a minor preventative maintenance on it. Which will increase the life, the life by about five years of all those streets. This does nothing for the, the streets that are in parable shape. We need to increase that fee to about five hundred dollars per car, and I don't think anyone's going to do this, so.
So what action?
I think just, uh, we, we do the budgets, when the actual will be there, just really just a consensus from you guys, yes, this is what, this is what we wanted to see. This is, uh, what we had in mind too. Right, I'd say it's terrible. You want something different.
I mean, do we have a consensus on for fifteen?
Yes, okay. Uh, the other, the other item that was mentioned was, um, the, the loop from previous developments, just, uh, saying they're restricted for specifically gray park. And what to do with that money. Um, and so, uh, like I said, this, it's about a hundred seventy thousand dollars. It is, it must be spent at Gray Park. It cannot be spent at Braxton or, or any other park. Alan had mentioned the need for additional, uh, soccer fields. Uh, so this will, a hundred seventy thousand, uh, if we could look, cut roughly, uh, nine, nine acres, we could timber nine acres, rub and clear that. Grade it, reseed it and have, uh, three thousand dollars per field for equipment for soccer nets, goalposts, et cetera. So it's us to that, because those are just rough estimates, we've not fit these out yet. But it would result in ideally four, but, uh, ideally four additional fields.
They worked here more than a day and one thing, we would also want to split into two locations. And John can explain those. We also looked at what can we do to improve play at Braxton Park and also Landisile. So if John was to just, uh, those two, Braxton.
Uh, Braxton just had, it has, uh. It had water retention issues and. It's a question mark of balance. That could be, it could be eighty thousand hard. You're going to want to feel for that. Uh, and Lagosiler, we don't own the land around, around it, so.
And also this money is restricted again.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we're still talking about.
Yes, it was, that's was purely gray parts, purely.
Blue side of those two sides.
Yes.
Now, if there's already fields there, then. It's nonsense to use this on the three fields.
Now, um, is this, uh, what's contained in our master plan as far as having three fields?
Uh, yeah, I, I think there's three fields in the master plan. There's a picture of it attached, and they're not exactly. In, in the same space that they're, they're, they are there, but all we're doing is kind of make it level. If we want to put something else there, it's fine. We would already had to do.
We just want to basically level out the land or so we can use.
Yeah.
Also, thanks. So mistaken.
Yeah, so we, we just, we're just going to be better for.
This is, this is not lights. This is not a fencing around it. This is just level open field.
Basically supplies.
Multi purpose.
Multi purpose.
Flag, soccer.
Do you have someone in mind to do that or you don't?
Yeah, I think, I think they'll work on that.
So we have.
Our.
Do you have a consensus on sending to the three multi purpose fields?
Absolutely. Thanks, John.
All in six point. She was asking, she was.
Please chief, uh, adding our specific two million performance in the column, it can be ugly. There's a concern that we had in the past. Uh, and we found more to address it, uh, the last time when we had it at Chatham Spill. And this is the place today is, it will, uh, give some direction on, uh, and here's the issue.
Such as issue, so. In a state that I assume I have an memorandum, I did read this, um, this came up, there's this outfit of cheek that I mentioned at the last committee's forum. Um, I reached out to N C Paul first, uh, in, and then U S Department of Agriculture regarding this issue. I kind of got a run away. Um, and they led back to, um, the last case we had here in the town and was giving Mr. Eric Buck. Look, my, his contact, so he, he just wanted to give everyone information that anybody else did. So he basically said we had a couple of options. Um, and we get resistance to USDA to come and attempt to assist with getting the vultures to move. He made no guarantees. Uh, he said a minimum cost is four hundred dollars, but they charge a lot of money. And he said basically they'll have to come back over two week time periods. Uh, to see if he can get the birds to relocate. Uh, as you see in here, it was, I just know it was a power technique pistol. I've never heard of such, but I did look it up. He gave you the website, they're thirty seven dollars. Uh, they shoot a bird danger. Uh, if you can get a box of a hundred from fifty three dollars into the air and explodes and scares the vulture away. But you, you have to be persistent and do this for about two hours, I mean, two weeks at the same time, every evening.
When, um, when a bunch of vultures. Do, two options were scared.
She was speaking to him last time and they hung the dead vulture.
But that's not really an option.
It is. That's what they're going to do. If we ask the USDA to come in, that's what they're going to.
After forty bucks an hour.
Well, it's four hundred a minimum. And then they have charges by the hour, by the time they're here, having to come back and check it.
Yes, so four hundred per hour. You know, that's the new time.
No, sir. No guarantees. He made that very clear to me. So we do not guarantee that we'll be able to move them.
So if they, if they, if we pay them four hundred dollars. Sure. Sounds like they just scared them off to another area of the town.
Sure, yes.
Well, it didn't scare them too much because I live over there. They were always there. You could see the dead vultures. What really bit it was when they tore into us.
Not because they were scared or something.
And he had some concerns with we described in the area where they're at. They're in the, pretty much on church property right now. Um, Ms. Chief was able to scare them away from our house.
He, he gave her a recommendation or two, or did he just give you the two options?
He, he said that was the two options. He said. He said he cannot, and he reemphasized, he cannot guarantee that he will be able to get them to, to leave.
So, they are gone.
According to. This is the church. He said they would leave at the end of April. That was when he said they're, they're not as prevalent as they were. Yeah, so, but, um, but they're, they're, they're not there right now.
Okay. But they're not there. Should we hold off or do we, should we do something?
I think that I've, I've seen them somewhere else.
What's going on?
Yeah, they do. One time I hung up, put a bag out and they thought that would get rid of them, but it didn't.
He, he had concern with basically where this is due to residential, uh, school nearby actually come out and shooting one. He had a lot of concerns related to that. Um, you know, where the old hospital was, was a little bit different. Um, this is right where the church is. You have a school right up the street from there and there's a lot of residential in that area. He was very concerned with coming out and, and having to shoot one.
I was, given that, uh, this is going to have closure and the options. Again, just want to see if any of you. I think so.
He, he didn't tell me what the hourly rate was.
His start off is just four hundred dollars.
For him to come out.
And then.
So that would be taken the first time though?
He said that you got, no, sir, he did not, but he said they would have to come back pretty much, pretty consistent over a two week timeframe. To monitor and, and see.
Ms. Booth, what do you think? Because you go to church there and you see, um, what, what do you think the town should do?
I think we need to have a plan of action. Because, and, and the thing is, because this is, I think there's prob, I think this is the worst year. For it to, to be, but I think they calmed it a year.
That is right.
And so, um.
And had them in on some property that I have.
Actually, sometimes land and water.
Time, I have sometimes doing those words.
So do, we should go with option one or two.
Let's, let's look at one.
This was a part of anything.
Also, not a red view.
So the power.
Out of technique pistol.
Well, is there, is there, are these pictures customers there? Should, if, if, continue without your one, is it work?
It's, it's one of the pleasures of the world is, um, you know, if they move from there, always. But, but we're, you know, we don't want to show what they expect. Um.
It might be a place.
So is it, is it possible to? Is it possible to say? That we could? Think about an option instead of making the decision tonight, just to, to see. And do a little here as far as, um. If there was anywhere else in the town, but also just looking at what we may be able to do in the meantime.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's the pleasure of the board, whichever.
Looking at the answer, thinking back and.
That's all right. I'll let them see. Give us an hourly rate.
Then we'll be careful. Well, in terms of bringing back, you, you have to ask a question, but Chief, do you know this power technique pistol, right? That shoots a red Vegas into the air. It's, it, power means fire, right? Is there anything like a power? So don't you sound about like surrounding.
Anytime you have something like that, you know, I mean, there's always that, that possibility.
Well, that's a woodland, kind of woodland area, isn't that, ain't right? So Chief, maybe we, maybe we should consult with Chief.
Um, we met with him, um, Dylan, we brought Dylan in and, um, keep marketing and we talked about trying to explore any options. You know, that we had, uh, with the fire ban that was in effect now it's, it's lifted, but that's always a consideration.
But if they're, if they're able to, even though it's hot, even though it might be hot in the summertime, summertime is more apt to be dry. So, you know, that would not be such a good idea with the power technique.
Uh, if you could, maybe get, uh, we can come back on this and, uh, generally next month. Yeah, awesome. Even the birds, it's, it's probably the two, is that you two shoot?
It would be, uh, yeah, uh, I mean, and also on this, uh, nevermind, Chief, uh. I think I first talked about this with the mayor, but also Commissioner Austin would have talked about this a little bit. There's some concerns about speeding and. Uh, you know, it's close to the park and there's an intersection there, Washington and Fourteenth Street. So. Uh, I asked Dylan to take a look at this and he put together a group, uh, and did some investigating. So he's got two, I'm G and the other. Six point two and six point four.
Yeah, um, so the compared speed is around Washington Park and. Right now, uh, Fourteenth Street from Michael to King Junior to Washington Avenue is both those twenty five. And then Washington Avenue to the end, it switches to fifteen mile an hour. Uh, Washington. I'm sorry, Thirteenth Street to Fourteenth Street is supposed to have fifteen and then from Fourteenth up is a twenty five. There's a map that, that makes more sense than that. So what we're recommending is that section of Fourteenth, uh, just like Fourteenth Street in its entirety to fifteen miles an hour. It's just the Fourteenth and Washington, but we can exclude the rest because that's the only area we're kind of focused on, because it was around Washington.
And, and just about, um, looking at Twelve Street, if you can look at Twelve Street too, because. Twelve Street has a lot of kids on it and it's, it's tight when you're going down and when cars coming together. So maybe I'm going to look at that as well.
Would you want me to look at twelve and fifteenth, I believe, that middle area?
Yeah.
Can we do that tonight, Kimberly?
I would, I would say, I would say, yes, we, we should. This is, this is. Fifteen, twelve, fourteen. Spring. Uh, just if you, and because Spring, Spring Avenue is short. And there's, you know, twenty five miles an hour.
And, but, you know, um, and I know it's fifteen mile, but, uh, people drive. It's a fifty mile per hour, so it, you know, but I would say we get all of it as fifteen.
I would need to change attachment B. That would just be adding that section.
Really what you're looking at, that means, uh, Clark, we could take care of that. Sixteen just needs to be updated. Where the motion is the ordinance amendment, and we add those streets that you just mentioned, uh, to make it there some twenty miles. Yes, you want to make that separate? Yeah, that's separate.
And so I'm saying if we change this to fifteen. Do we need to change, make a change on both motions?
That'd be fine.
So let's see.
So we include Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteenth, Fourteenth, Washington Avenue and Spring Avenue.
Well, Thirteen, Thirteen.
So our street is not included in that?
So there's, um, stylistic company works.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mayor Porter, you also, you include North Avenue also.
I make a motion. That we. Remove section fifteen dash one twenty-three, adding Twelve, Fourteenth, Thirteenth. Washington Avenue, Spring Avenue, North Avenue, in its entirety to a fifteen zone, a fifteen mile per hour zone.
A second.
Moving by the second. Motion passive, is there a second motion?
Make a motion.
That has taken everything that's posted for section fifteen dash one two three and.
Actually, the, the attachment B on here is mannequin, so each motion that y'all do to change an ordinance. It's supposed to be updated in mannequin, so really this attachment B doesn't. Have to be approved, you have to go back through the motions and then it updates this. Does that make sense?
So then you say the motion?
I think we just like to adopt attachment B.
Okay.
Because it's, it's claiming a.
Does it need to be decided based on discretion?
We can say then.
I guess that's the difference between.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that will adopt attachment B version of section fifteen dash one two three. The amendments from the previous motion to include Twelfth Street, Fourteenth Street, Fifteenth Street, Washington Avenue, Spring Avenue, and North Avenue. To replace the outdated version posted on the town code.
Is there a second?
A second.
Well, I'm like, Mr. Mack, I'm gonna stay up here. So doing the same thing as we were reviewing this area, the area of Fifteenth and Washington. There's, it's not a stop intersection, so vehicles are ever maintained or speed and then accelerates out of your speed. Whereas installing two stop signs, got first thing through a stop in this area, it's gonna help slow down. This just needs your approval, I believe.
You're just giving management the guidance on that.
So we're looking at Thirteenth, it goes straight down and it curves. Into two, so when you're hitting the two stop signs, you're putting the two stop signs at the corner of Washington and Thirteenth. Okay.
So, um, consensus or?
Consensus, it just, it's sent in an ordinance to get approval from the board, so.
So consensus on installation of stop signs, two stop signs for section.
It's a new assessment.
We're signing two stop signs at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Thirteenth Street.
I believe that we approve of installation of stop signs at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Fourteenth Street.
If we move by the second, I was in favor. I was opposed, motion carries.
Our request has come from Trial River.
So as you can see, um, the spreadsheet, Trial River has asked us to, have sent us the proposal. For the transfer of all of these positions that you see listed. Here it is. Now it just includes the name. Is this what I'm handing you tonight, right, how is your packet?
Right.
It's gonna show the. It's just a, the policy, um, you know, the. The website. And so we have some here from Dick and Paul here from Trial River tonight. They can answer any questions, but Sanford. Recommended these salaries, um, to go ahead so they can send these employees their final offer list.
So, so.
Yes, sir.
Most people are, are getting a.
Yes and no, I don't even want to do any more questions. Okay. There, I mean, I'm, I'm just moving that. The position of, you know, we talk physicians?
Yes.
So water filtration operator three, there are two of those, and the person that's water feeder. Well, one of them got a raise and one of them, are there significant differences in those raises? Is there a reason for that?
Paul, are you familiar, uh, Dick, are you familiar? So some of them I do know had certain L R C, um, certifications that other ones didn't have, so that's. That could have been where some of the changes were.
Mistress, thank you. Uh, I, I, I can't answer it specifically, but I can tell you what we looked at was the position, the timing grade. Okay, and the different quality ratings that they had. So some may be in the same position, but get paid slightly different because of timing grid or, or some certifications or some of those kinds of things.
And all three levels, one, two, and three, great.
We're wishing to approve the city center salary changes for town, so city employees per list attached.
Uh, six point five.
Yeah, I think you, Chris, uh, and I, I needed, uh, there's two things here, one. Uh, it's, and I have already agreed to, uh, provide space. Uh, and if we did, it'd be something we would, we'd arm with that with Portland, with Sanford. And previous conversations the board had, we need to continue having building in our building, and so the site will be upstairs in the basement. And so this is the proposal, and, um, just like to give, I guess, um, this is a staff recommendation, we had agreed to, on the board with this. So where the, um, park recreation staff is now, utility director is there now, so. It'd be about a little less, um, so the L P A is, you go to the right, right? You can just go straight in. But there's been the park recreation in the past, most recently has become one of the facilities. And so they've got some drawings in here, how they would renovate that area. Uh, having the public come in and get to a window, they had two or three, uh, windows to come up to, and the convenience would still be in the building, uh, I think that's what the board.
Well, they still have the thing outside to click, so you don't have to go inside.
What, what would you question?
Um, for private construction.
Yeah, and that's going to have a detailing voltage. This, this, this obviously, uh, as far as paying. You, you know, if we're still, we drop off the Vegas, it's still okay?
That's, that's for the foreseeable future. That's not a short term.
That would be a good question for Trial, but next with, uh, with Trial, I'll let him answer that, about the plans moving forward.
Yeah, um, you know, the drop offs over on this side, we, we prefer drop offs as two. Um, security things that we always double check and just make sure from, you know, from that standpoint. But, yeah, we, we see no problem with the drop offs on that side. You know, as long as we're here, I would assume that that drop box would stay as long as, and the council, you know, allow that.
That we currently have Parks and Rec and. Works, Public Utilities, Public Works, one of those.
Parks and Rec, uh, and Kimberly, I made some transition. I feel like they all suck in finance. Those folks are gonna move out, move, move down to the basement. Parks and Rec moving in back up to the second floor, first floor. And using, uh, this is where the former work director is, which is now the Parks and Rec Director's office today. Uh, and then using the building office to house some of those folks, so. Let me go on four, and we got space for. Thanks, thanks for questioning.
Any other questions? This is, that was already, that was a lot on the budget that we, when they had like thumbs up work. For some renovation work.
Uh, yeah, that is for the painting kiosks that are in finance right now to remove those, and that is a back figure, but, but. Yes, this is good.
Okay, just making sure some definitely.
Some renovations where the offices now.
If there's no enclosures or any questions?
Yeah, first of all, there's a, uh, monthly financial report, uh, financial providers in your pocket. We're gonna try to start doing that every third, uh, meeting or third Monday for, for the board, so that for your information, John, if you have any questions. I'm a two hundred and two, so I need to watch Recreation Director. Uh, his current job is today.
Uh, I'm so happy to be back. My family there, my mother's there, my mother-in-law's there, my bone's there. I'm just excited to get out there, we got a band on, um. It's moving better than wherever, give it a shot, but like I said, I'm happy to be here, appreciate you.
Uh, should your calendar for you on the table, as we need to do, um, West Fifth Street, River crossing, uh, Dylan and the chief, I think they've gotten some information on that class of meetings, but I'm not sure how long it looks like it's gonna be.
I've not gotten any information as to how long it'll be fun, but they will be.
So, I mean, with, uh, crossing on top of, just, just right on West Fifth Street. Uh, so that's a heads up on that, um, there won't be detour routes, it's, it's, it's put together. With our, uh, brand, usually the Rangers, uh, Jim Burles are being. They can be moved and moved other ways, so I want to share that, and, um, that's about it, that's all I have.
You should go over there and press the button.
So wonderful. I do have a couple of things I need to discuss with y'all. Um, so we do, I was able to speak with, uh, Chad Monument next, uh, next door. They were able to expedite, uh, the granite and the bronze, and they can do it, um, have it installed. It would be Saturday, um, June twenty-eighth would be the earliest that we could, um, dedicate the Washington Park in George Dark and Mary Navy, June twenty-eighth, um. Commissioner Austin, I knew, um, know you told me Mr. Dark's, um, been in that hill, so, but that's the earliest. That I can get that, um, it would be June twenty-eighth. So I would just need a consensus of the board to keep that date for the granite. Um, and move forward with that day, or if y'all wanted to do something quicker and just not have the granite and do that later. We're your, what's the pleasure of the board?
You said June twenty?
June twenty-eight.
Do we, do we separate it and come back later?
We, we waited.
Okay.
It is June twenty-eighth, okay?
What time? Let's shoot for ten AM again, because it'll be hot.
Yeah, last year it was coming.
And it was the beginning of June.
We have power over there, we can have a fan.
Yes. And then the, um, the next thing that I have is, uh, as you can see, the, as everyone knows, the sun has been installed. Um, we're hoping whether for many of they start hooking up the electrical or start digging tomorrow to trench it. We ran into some other analytical issues with, um, some lighting and the lights out there that are not working, so trying to get all of that, um, going, so that's all I have for you tonight.
Representative Tim, I, I want to go back and highlight some of the calendar things. Our history three form is Thursday, six o'clock. The lead perpetrator church, also, only for twenty-nine, they're doing a grand opening for the Welcome Center. That's a Tuesday from three to seven, um, and then lastly, I don't know if we have another meeting, so May third is our speaking festival.
Staying on jobs, um, now under the Chatham, um, Chamber of Commerce and twenty twenty-five development briefing. We will send, um, Brianna will send out an invitation to all of you tomorrow if you would like to attend. And with us, and, um, get your ticket and more information.
I'm calling quickly, I'm gonna try to attain a CRC. Uh, event, but there's a conflict on that, obviously.
You know, we talked a lot. We, we, we know the tracks at Birch, um, Birch Rally and Second. And we've been told that it's up to the railroad company to clean up their mess. Is there any chance Public Works could just take care of it with a knuckle truck? It's just old creosote logs. It's, it's the same pile that's been there for years. Don't want to have permission from the.
The contractor that reached out to our closings, um, requested that he give me a contact that I can talk to. It would be, I've reached out, I have the closings, um, requested that you give me a contact that I can talk to. I will, I will, good. I think we do have to have permission of their material, but.
We see them. Should.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.